Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming. Call the board, please.
Trustee Spurling, here. Trustee Lee. Trustee Heitz. Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
And Trustee Bond.
Here.
And we do have a quorum this evening. Thank you. Move on to public participation. We have the first item is public comment. Any member of the public that's not on the agenda elsewhere that wishes to address the board, now would be your opportunity to come before the board, make-
President Rowley, just to clarify, I know there's some residents here that would like to speak about the gas and wash. That's on later in the agenda. Do you want them to come up now or during that item?
I think we'll do during that item.
Okay, thank you.
Just to keep it together. All right, hearing none, we'll move on. Item B, we have Paula Christensen, Bryn Mawr Drive regarding a noise complaint. Come up to the podium. All right.
Apparently it wasn't that noisy.
Well, we did contact her. We went out and investigated the complaint and found that it was coming from VVF.
Is that that one?
And so we let her know that she should contact the county.
Okay.
I didn't know if she would still come or not.
All right, we'll move on to item C. We have Jim McKenzie, 1357 Oak Ridge Lane regarding parking over the sidewalk. Jim?
Yes, good evening. My name is Jim McKenzie. I live over in the Arbor Ridge subdivision. And I'm just here to talk about the issue of cars parking over the sidewalk. And basically, this has been an ongoing issue for just about two years in our subdivision. And I've filed numerous request trackers to try to have this issue taken care of, as a couple of people I spoke with about that. Apparently, that has not happened because the cars continue to park across the sidewalk, which I do believe is a violation of an ordinance that's on the books. And I just think that as the weather warms up, that that issue needs to get resolved sooner than later because more and more people are going to be out and trying to enjoy the nice weather and using the sidewalks within the village, and it's going to become a safety issue. You know, and what really brought this to my attention was the comments or discussion that was had at a couple of board meetings ago when the village was talking about the snow plowing issue that the Public Works is having. And that became a hot button issue for staff and other people here, which is impacting village services. But apparently, when residents have an issue, it falls on kind of deaf ears with people on the board and trustees and other employees of the village. So I think that's kind of an issue that residents aren't being heard and issues being taken care of. So I just wanted to come and make everybody on the board aware that this is an ongoing issue, has been an ongoing issue for almost two years, and nothing's been done about it. And I think it's time that something gets done.
Well, I agree that parking over the sidewalk is an issue. I disagree with your comment that the the village board members don't hear residents' complaints. I believe that's false, and I believe that there are residents here that are going to talk on another topic, that they're specifically here because it was mentioned and we did hear their complaints.
Well, I've had a couple of conversations with board members.
You've never had a conversation with me.
You're correct. I'm not going to name names, but there's some people up there that are aware that I've had numerous conversations with them. And apparently, the village has contacted the main issue in our subdivision. They've even cited, given a citation. But that has not stopped them from taking care of the issue, and I brought that to have people's attention. I brought it to code enforcement. And I was told that he only works seven to 3:30. And that's how he left his comment with me. And I've talked with members of the police department, and they've told us to go walk out of the mall. But these are called sidewalks, not side parks. And this is why I'm here tonight, to address the whole board and say that this is an issue that has been brought up to various members of staff and village trustees. And this needs to get resolved. It's just not in our subdivision. It's everywhere. And we've seen more and more people out having to walk out in the streets to get around these cars. And that's a public safety issue. I'd hate for somebody to get hit by a car that doesn't see these people walking across walks. And then that's going to become a big concern for the village. So I would just like to take the time for you guys to talk about this and find a way to resolve this issue without having people come in and talk to the board. We're supposed to follow through proper protocol of submitting a request tracker. That's fallen on deaf ears by the person who's supposed to be enforcing it. So I would like to just bring that to your attention to say that if these people are parking at 6:00 AM or 6:00 PM or midnight, it's a code violation that needs to be addressed. And I've put that in my request trackers when I'm having these issues. And it's not getting resolved.
Is the request tracker, is that something on our website?
Yes. And that is supposed to be the proper channel that we're supposed to submit our complaints or issues, right?
Yeah. Right, we will talk about it later. I will say it's been a problem for 20 years here, Oswego, Yorkville, all over.
Sure.
Mainly because their garages are full sometimes and the cars back up and all of a sudden, they're going over a sidewalk. Now, we've discussed this, we'll have to ask Dan and our code enforcement officer, what we do on tickets. Because some of these people get tickets. I know in my neighborhood, they get them and they just pay them and they just don't think about them, I guess.
And that's why we have two car garages, to park our two cars in the garage. And that becomes a bigger issue. And the other issue is if you, I would assume that if you ticket the same people numerous times, that there's other mechanisms that the village can do. I do believe when it snows, you can tow cars. So maybe if these guys aren't afraid of the $25 ticket, maybe it's time to yank some cars out of the way.
But like you say, on the snow removal, we'll have the people throw the snow in the road from their contractors. And you can't go around, try to ticket all these residents.
From the code of ordinances.
Yeah, let's-
I appreciate the dialogue, but let's have, if Director Young and the chief can kind of address how we normally would handle something like this. Because reality is, it's an ordinance that's on the books that we do enforce. As you know, Jim, we rank all of our requests that come in, at least I believe that staff does, especially in the police department, in order of seriousness. And this would obviously fall a little bit down further on the list, but still important.
Well, what happens when somebody gets hit by a car, man?
Right, and I know. I know that that's a concern.
It hasn't fallen on deaf ears.
That's a public safety issue.
Rich and the chief can talk to you about what they've done regarding this specific case.
You know, I thank you very much, everyone. And I talked to Jim several times. I talked to him in 2017. I talked to him earlier this year in 2018. And I'm the one who said, excuse me, when he wanted to walk in the street when it was icy and snow, I said, "You should go out to the Fox Valley Mall and walk." They have a program out there for seniors, and anybody who wants to walk, well, it's climate controlled. So that was me who said that. And you're not the first one that I've said that to, and you won't be the last. We, I'm not sure what you mean by deaf ears. And I'll let the community development director speak, who is a supervisor over code enforcement. But I've talked to Matt and Mike multiple times of your complaint. We're 24/7, so I don't use that excuse as 7 to 3. I've never heard them use that excuse with me, 7 to 3.
When I had my conversation with Matt, he did.
Well, I talked to Matt multiple times. I have multiple paperwork here. Complaints going all the way back to 3/3, 2017, so we're talking a year.
Yeah.
Just for clarification, is this one neighbor of yours or all over in your neighborhood?
One typically does it, but it's a problem throughout the subdivision seasons ridge.
Yeah.
You know, throughout, I'm assuming throughout the village.
It happened, yeah. It does happen, it does occur. And it's something that we, especially as we get into the springtime, we do need people to adhere to that, right?
Absolutely.
Especially when kids are outside playing. What's, Rich, do you have anything to add?
I know that Matt has been, our code enforcement officer, Matt Fitzpatrick, has been out there numerous times over the last several months and has never witnessed the car parked over the sidewalk, so. That is true, that he works 7 to 3:30, so if it's happening at 8:30 at night, he's not going to see it. But that's what a patrol officer could possibly see.
Yeah, and has anybody knocked on this individual's door to explain that this is a violation, you shouldn't do it, your ticket, you know, whatever it is the first time will be ramped up if you continue to violate the ordinance?
Yeah, that is correct. And just one quick clarification. Me, myself personally, I've been out there at night on the weekends and before 7:00 AM, 6:30 in the morning. And you're correct, Mayor, it is one address that we're having difficulty with. We talked to them, we've explained it, and they paid the fine. So maybe it is time to rank, ramp that fine up. I can tell you, since I talked to Jim in February, we haven't found the violation. And I've talked to Matt and Mike about it multiple times. And I've also have Jim, you know, he was given a not emergency number to call it in when it's happening. It gets put with dispatch, right assigned to call. So you can do that also.
Chief, every day last week, the cars were parked there between 6:00 and 6:30 in the morning, every day. I have pictures if you want to. I have a timestamp that I can send them to you guys, so, you know.
If you ever just call it into dispatch.
Okay.
And then it'll be all logged in on the, on I status, and then we'll send a car over to the issue of citation. I, no, we fully enforce that ordinance now. There is discussion about when there's snow plowing going on. You can't have, we can't have it both ways. You can't say, "Get off the street and block the sidewalk." And we don't issue tickets during that short period of time when public works is out.
Yeah, I understand that. I have pictures where it's clear as a bell.
Okay.
Where they're parked across the sidewalk as well.
So maybe for follow-up from the village board's standpoint, and I do appreciate you bringing this to our attention, but as we get into the spring, next week actually, can staff think, you know, in the next couple of weeks, how we can best really get that information out to folks that this is something that we take seriously, that you can't park over the sidewalk, it could endanger lives? Probably serves as a great reminder before the spring. And then figure out what to do on ramping up the situation for repeat offenders.
Yes, sir.
Does that work?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd just like to remind everybody that they're called sidewalks, not side parks.
Awesome.
That's why we put them in the village, so people can get out and walk and enjoy the village and use the sidewalks as they're intended to be used for, so. I appreciate your time.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Just a quick question. Is this something that it can be a step fine?
I'm sorry?
Is this something, parking over the sidewalk, if it's a repeat offender and he's done it multiple times, I think the fine for that right now is $25.
Correct.
It's $25 each occurrence. It's not a step fine right now, is it?
Well, what we'll do is, we'll issue a notice to appear, make them go to court, and the fine could be up to $750. And I'll talk to village attorney Kirsten Casas to discuss that further.
That's certainly something that can be progressively enforced.
But currently, right now, it's just a status quo, 25?
Correct.
Okay.
Awesome. All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda, we have John McVickers. McVickers Development regarding retail development. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is John McVickers. The name of my company is McVickers Development. And I'm here to respectfully request the board to reconsider the decision it made with regard to the PUD amendment for the proposed Christian Brothers Automotive in the Walmart shopping center that my firm developed. I sent a letter, but I'd like to read that letter. I think it lays out the points. My wife and I are small business owners who have made a significant investment in Montgomery over the last decade. We took a huge risk on Montgomery by starting the Orchard Road Route 30 retail development in 2005. When the recession hit, we doubled down and used our savings to pay down debt in order to keep the banks happy when land values plummeted. We are now looking to recoup some of that investment by developing the last few remaining outlots surrounding the Walmart. Unfortunately, the retailers, the universe of retailers has shrunk permanently. When we zoned the Walmart development, the village administration at that time required that we only have one automotive use in hopes that the development could attract sit-down restaurants. Due to a small daytime population around our development and the popularity of the Oswego Route 30 corridor, that just is not going to happen. We have been able to identify a quality retailer in Christian Brothers Automotive to take the location between Merlin and Murphy Oil. I think it's important to note that that location already having an automotive use and a gasoline station, fuel center, is going to impact who's going to be willing to go on to that location. Now about Merlin. I know Merlin attended the village board meeting and portrayed itself as the little guy who would be harmed by competition if Christian Brothers is allowed to move forward. In fact, Merlin is a large corporation with 200 employees, 75 locations in multiple states, and $35 million in annual sales. While the Montgomery location operates as a franchisor-franchisee relationship, this same $35 million company has a strong financial interest in stifling competition in Montgomery to the detriment of the village and its residents. I believe that the village board was not fully informed when it voted against this project earlier this month. Furthermore, there was no testimony given at the village board meeting to support the idea that there would be a diminution in value of the land upon which the Merlin, the Merlin business is located. In fact, Christian Brothers and Merlin are basically the same use, so there can be no diminution in land value. Instead, the video of the board meeting clearly shows that the only testimony given involved the potential impact on Merlin's business. This fact, as pointed out by the village's council, is not a fact that should be taken into consideration in making zoning decisions. I would like to point out that there is a significant cost to the village of Montgomery if Christian Brothers is not allowed to open at this site. First, Christian Brothers will not be looking for another location in Montgomery. They have already started looking for a location in Orland Park to replace the Montgomery site. They have all, they are allowing me a short time to attempt to get the approvals necessary for them to move forward on this site. Second, Christian Brothers does an average of $1.5 million in sales at each of their locations. This would result in approximately $30,000 of additional annual sales tax revenue to the village, which would go a long way towards paying for police and fire salaries, road improvements, and beautification efforts around the village. Third, the Montgomery location will be operated by local employees. Christian Brothers expects to hire eight local people. That's eight new jobs, not to mention the additional revenue that will come from those eight people and their patrons spending money at the surrounding businesses in this area. I know the village is committed, the village board is committed to business growth. And this project is just that. It's an overall net win for the village of Montgomery that will result in significant additional sales tax revenue, $30,000 annually, additional jobs, eight, and the development of vacant land that has been vacant for over a decade with no realistic alternative uses in today's internet-based economy. I urge each of you to reconsider your position on this matter. We've tried really, really hard over the last 13 years to provide a quality development at the Route 30 and Orchard location. We've stuck with the village, and I think we've brought a lot of good uses to that property. I would love to bring in another sit-down restaurant. I'd love to bring in some other types of uses. But the reality is that the world has changed. Those lots have sat vacant for quite some time. The thing that gets me most about the decision that was made was at the basis of what the decision, the basis on which the decision was made. I respectfully request that you reconsider. It's my understanding, and your councils advise you accordingly, that anybody who voted against that decision has the right to bring up the topic for discussion, a discussion again, in which case it can be voted upon again. I don't want to tell you how to do your business, and obviously, you'll want to confirm that with your council. But again, I respectfully request that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Let me just say something real quick that I was one on the board for. But John has put, for the people in the public here, John has put all the development around Walmart, except Walmart and Murphy's, basically, haven't you? That section-
My company developed the whole intersection.
Right.
We signed the deal with Walmart when that property was farmland.
Right.
And then a year later, we purchased the property across the street that has the Walgreens and the strip retail and so 55 acres at that intersection. My firm bought between 2005 and 2007. And when I say "my firm," it's my wife and I. It's not some big, you know, corporation. We're a small business.
I think that's what people driving by say, "Well, Walmart here," and they sold all the lots around it and all that, and it was really just you going out and getting those people. And I think you even mentioned maybe, like you say, retail's dead. It is. It's all gone elsewhere. But you mentioned maybe Dollar Tree, one of the biggest stores in Dollar Tree in that area, maybe going in that area. And in that case, that's what people are retailers, going after dollar items. So I think you're right there, and I would not know anything else that would go where Merlin's, next to Merlin's, except this place. I, that's why I voted for it. I didn't see it. And I would reconsider, you know, I'd like to see the board reconsider, but it's really up to the, to the no votes if they would reconsider, and we'll talk about it again and see what-
Yeah, go ahead. Can I explain that a little bit?
Yeah, sure. For the motion to reconsider, it would be one of the trustees who are on the prevailing side. So for, in this case, it would be somebody that voted no for the use that would then bring the motion to reconsider. There'd be a vote on the motion to reconsider itself. And then if that motion passed at a later meeting, there would be an actual vote on the item. And because this was a zoning issue, there would be a new public hearing that would have to take place as well. So there would be first the motion to reconsider the vote, and then if the item is actually, if that motion to reconsider passes, then the item would go on the agenda separately is the review of that amendment to PUD and special use.
Good. And, yeah. So Denny voted?
I voted yes, so like she said, I couldn't bring it up.
Correct. Yeah, Denny and Doug. So the other three board members voted against it, so this would be entirely up to them to reconsider.
I'd like to clarify a point. If the nature of the business can't be considered as a reason to vote against it, why would the nature of the business be considered as a reason to vote for it? The argument being that nothing else could possibly fit in that lot, except what he's describing is essentially an argument-
You wouldn't change the factors that you look at. You would still be looking at the same criteria. It would be whether or not you believe that the facts apply differently than maybe you initially thought, or that there was a different information that came forth, or a different perspective that would change your mind. But the factors stay the same for the special use analysis. There's nothing new that would change with regard to meeting those criteria or not. It's whether there's a change in facts that just came to your attention or whether or not your viewpoint changed based on later information.
That's, I agree with you. I'm not hearing any new facts.
Well, the new argument, or the old argument, was strictly competition between the two next door to each other. But our special use can't use that, and I think Steve told us that, you can't use that to not advance the special use. Competition has nothing to do with it. And we argued a lot that night, but in the end, like John said, on the video, it was mostly put up that it was competition between the two. Not that the special use was in the wrong, I don't know, wrong size or whatever.
The special use requirement calls for it detrimental to the property. It's not an affiliated business or an associated business next door. It's detrimental to the property. And the point for me was, if this is detrimental to the property, then so was Merlin's. Because it's the same use. So if Merlin's was, if this is detrimental to the property, then so was Merlin's. So how did that get approved and passed?
Trustee Marisak, that was my point that I was, I was trying to make. They're the same use. So it's kind of hard for me to understand how, you know, that property, that use on one property is harmful, but it's not harmful if it's on the other property. And I will tell you, I watched for a number of different reasons. I watched the video. I unfortunately was stuck in Baltimore, you know, with, it was a big snowstorm that weekend, and wasn't able to get back in time. As you can imagine, you know, when we lost that vote, you know, I watched that video a few times and have discussed it with a number of different advisors. There was, there was no, there was no testimony given that there would be any detrimental impact on the land, just to the business. Which just, frankly, it's not right. I'm a non-practicing attorney, but I can tell you from my perspective, and I know I've got a dog in this fight, it's just not right to take into consideration.
But at some point, whenever this development was, was initially started, it was determined that there would only be one of this type of use in that, that series of outlots there.
Correct, but that member, that's where-
Trustee Youngerman, you're correct. And I will tell you that it was me, you know, involved with that negotiation at the time. And it was because the village administrator at the time wanted to try to motivate the development team, if you would, to bring in sit-down restaurants. You just don't have the daytime population for sit-down restaurants. And at the time, the Oswego corridor was not as developed as it is now developed. And there's 13 years to show that fact. And the fact is, is that, you know, the reasoning for limiting automotive use to just one unit at that point in time is no longer valid. I mean, from a standpoint of, from a business standpoint, it's not, it's not, it's not a good reason anymore. It wasn't because they didn't want to have two automotive uses. It was because they didn't want to give up the potential for having sit-down restaurants.
And I think the biggest, the biggest thing was, and I said that, when I, when I had the covenant in my hand, all they had, would have had to done Merlin's, instead of saying, "As of, it ends 2013", is say, "It ends 2025, and we wouldn't have this discussion," because the covenant was there. But they put the year at 2013. Well, 2013 has come and gone. And that's what they said. "We want protection till 2013." They got it.
So-
And after that, it's done.
The one point that I'll make on that, too, the, the original PUD that was approved was essentially through negotiations between the village and the developer, not the, not the village and any future user. And so this was our agreement. And it's the agreement that's standing until the two of us decide that it's going to change. And maybe you can comment on this. If you, have you ever worked on a development where, let's say, in a Jewel Outlet, or even Walmart, I don't know if they have this, where they will negotiate restrictions on the rest of the outlots? Where Merlin's could have done that if they wanted to?
I can tell you that this development has quite a few restrictions on it. I wasn't allowed to put a gas station in place because Walmart knew they were, in all likelihood, going to put a gas station in place. So I was restricted. I couldn't do that. Across the street, I can't do a Walgreens competitor. I can't put a CVS. In the Walmart side, I personally can't develop a coffee use, because Starbucks, when we brought Starbucks into that strip center, they said, "We'll come, but you have to agree that you'll put a restriction on all the other land that you own within this development, and you won't do a coffee use." I've had Dunkin' Donuts come to me, I don't know, half dozen times over the course of the last 10, 12 years. Can't do it until Starbucks moves out. Burger King has a restriction that they got us to agree on hamburgers. So if McDonald's wanted to come and go in the Walmart parking lot, not that they would at this juncture, we couldn't do it. That's, that is common business practice within our, within our industry to agree to certain restrictions. And at the time, you kind of make your best guess and you go forward. I will also tell you that when it comes to negotiating with villages, we oftentimes, you know, do the same thing. In this case, but I can also tell you that there are plenty of times where we change that. We go back to the village and say, "Things have changed. Times have changed." Nobody can sit here and say that in 2005, things are the same as they were today. Pre-recession, post-recession, super contraction on retailers in general. But for the most part, through our hard efforts and the village's hard efforts, you know, we've got a nice project- we've got a nice project there. But we also have a bunch of land that's left over that's, nothing's happening to it. So we go out and we find a quality user that's going to bring jobs, that's going to bring money into the village, and it's going to develop a piece of property that's vacant and has no real signs of, of other users coming. So we come to you and we say, we would like you to consider allowing us to do another automotive use. Is it going to be, is it, is there going to be an impact on one of the businesses in town? I don't know. One's in automotive use and other one's in automotive use. There are a lot of multi, you know, multiple unit users within the various businesses in town. And we've given you all kinds of facts surrounding that. This one's right next to each other. Yeah, I get it. But the fact is, is that it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter that they're competing uses unless you can prove that one use is going to devalue the land around it. And I haven't heard any testimony to that effect. I know it's hard. It's really hard, Mr. Bond and Mr. Jungerman and Mrs. Spurling. It's really hard to reconsider things. All we're asking is that you reconsider it and we'll bring it back and vote on it again.
I'd like to clarify something with Attorney Julian, please. When we were discussing this, Attorney Anderson was here. And we were discussing what the plan commission uses their, the list of items that they use to make their decision and that they're bound by that. When Attorney Anderson was, was explaining things to us, I'm under the impression that I'm elected to vote my opinion in the best interest of Montgomery. That's why I was elected and that I didn't necessarily have to be bound by the, the list of standards there that the plan commission uses to make their recommendation.
The standards are generally, generally applicable regardless if it's the plan commissioner or the board, but the board has no obligation to vote the way the plan commission votes or to accept the recommendation or to make the same findings of the actual facts. However, they must still make the same findings of the standards. So they must find that those criteria are met. However, they don't have to agree with the way that the planning commission applied whatever findings or whatever facts to those criterion, if that makes any sense. So yes, those standards still apply to the village board. However, the village board is free to make their own interpretation as to how the facts do apply to that standard.
And our own opinion on, again, what I had said several times was that it didn't make sense to me to put two of the same uses next to each other. The examples that were brought up, none of them were next to each other. So my question for you, Mr. McVickers, would be, can you please give me an example where that's worked? Where you've had two identical uses next to each other and we didn't have an impact or enough of an impact on one of the businesses where we end up with an empty building next to a use? That's my concern. I don't want to end up with an empty building sitting on a lot and then we, we still have one business that's doing okay or maybe struggling or maybe eventually thrives. I don't want an empty building sitting there.
I do want to clarify for a second. So as far as whether or not two buildings next to each other, so that wouldn't be one of the standards, that wouldn't be necessarily one of the criterion. It could be one of the facts that apply to the criterion if you believe that that would affect property values and you'd make your finding in that regard, or you believe that it, you know, would make some other detrimental impact with regard to those standards. But it still does have to apply to one of the standards. But how, you know, if the planning commission says, we feel these standards are met, you can find that they're not met or vice versa. But the same standards still do have to be, those facts do still have to apply to the standards that the planning commission used.
So you are supposed to use the standards that they use. Laura's point was that while they say it met all of those, you may have a different opinion, think it didn't meet one of those, but you would just need to show.
You're still looking at the same thing is what they're looking at.
So I'll rephrase that then. My concern with it becoming injurious to another property is that if we moved forward and we have the two identical or very similar uses next to each other, and it does harm one of them, let's say one of them, they either, they're both struggling and maybe eventually one of them goes out of business. Now we're sitting there with an empty building. That's my big concern with putting these two uses next to each other.
So your concern is that the, the competitive use would put somebody out of business?
Right. And then we have an empty building sitting there.
I don't think we can, we can't deny it based on a compete, on competition.
What about common sense?
Standards.
What's that?
What about common sense? To me, it doesn't make sense to put two of the same uses next to each other. You just said you've got the restrictions. Walgreens wouldn't allow a CVS to come in that close to them, let alone next to them.
But CVS wants to go right next to them.
It happens quite often.
But excuse me, excuse me one moment. But that example was brought up repeatedly when we discussed this. So now I'm saying that a Walgreens would not allow a CVS to come in next to them or across the street.
Sure. If they can negotiate that with the landowner before they buy it, yeah, they would want that, sure.
Ms. Spurling, I think, I think you're jumping to the conclusion that it never happens and it does happen.
I'm asking for an example. If you could give me an example, please.
If I, if you gave me 20 minutes to Google, I'll find a place where there's a Walgreens and a CVS on opposite corners.
Okay.
I will tell you in green grass markets like Montgomery, which this is a newer developing market with newer homes. Retailers come in and they have a little bit more negotiating power with small companies like me when we try to do a development. Go up and down the streets of Chicago where density is so strong and the retailers don't have as much leverage with landowners, and you'll see CVS next to Walgreens. You'll see Caribou Coffee next to Starbucks. You'll, you'll see AT&amp;T next to Verizon. There are all kinds of opportunities where you can find that. The fact of the matter is, is that as, as, as the attorney for the village pointed out, competition's not the issue. It may be in your mind, I mean, it may be for you, and I appreciate the fact that it is, but from a legal standpoint, my consultants tell me it's not supposed to be.
And the one other thing I would add is if that was, if that was, so I see for CVS or, or you said Starbucks, that was so important to them as a corporation that they negotiated that into their lease in that building with the landowner and they paid a premium for that. So Merlin's had every right to try and negotiate that with the landowner if that was so important to them. And it was to negotiate in a three-year window or whatever it was.
It was a fourteen-month window from the day that the landowner purchased the land until the day that the restriction preventing me from doing another automotive use expired. It expired December thirteenth of two thousand and thirteen. And the negotiations we had at that time were to give them chance to get up and running. Two thousand and thirteen to, let's just call it December of two thousand and seventeen is over four years. I think, I think we've given them ample top opportunity to get up and running. We could have come and tried to do an automotive use on January first, two thousand and fourteen.
That's what I said. They could have made it twenty twenty-five and it'd been entirely different.
Here's, here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to give you the opportunity, I'll reconsider this. I'll give you the opportunity in two weeks to come back and present again. I'll look at the fact, the findings again. I disagree with you where you say that there's not a need for restaurants and that sort of thing over at Orchard and Thirty, because I think by a show of hands, residents here, if you raise your hand, how many people think that they need a restaurant over by Orchard and Thirty?
Oh, yeah. I mean.
Mr. Jungerman, please, please, let me, let me clarify this. I did not, I don't believe I did, and if I did, I didn't mean to, say there's no need for them. I've been trying to bring sit-down restaurants to that intersection for twelve or thirteen years. And we attend all the ICSC conventions and we hire all the brokers. We work really, really hard. And I'll tell you, it's more lucrative to bring sit-down residence, restaurants for a developer than it is to sell to an automotive use, hands down. My point was, is that the marketplace is not providing that to us.
The other, and a couple of comments that I'll make is, so if you look at it straight from a zoning standpoint, this is a great use to go between a gas station and an automotive use. It's not such a great use for a sit-down family restaurant without outdoor seating. The other thing that I will say is the, and the reason why I'm really letting this conversation continue and move forward for, for such a lengthy time is that we strive in this village to be pro-growth, business oriented. And I know, we could do the show of hands thing again, I know everybody in this village believes that they pay too much for property taxes right now. And this would be one way to help keep that lower by putting a million-dollar building on a vacant lot. It would increase our tax base, provide a small amount of jobs and competition. And I don't want to see us vote down and, and be the, the village that doesn't welcome competition in their, in their business corridors.
You have a village board. This is not the same village board as it was 10 years ago. You have a village board right now that is very pro-growth and we're willing to work with developers. And I think that we've shown that. We can't have this, the same argument come up and put another of this same use by Merlin's and by Christian Brothers and we just can't have Automotive Row.
But we could. We could. I mean, I think everybody wants, that was one of the first calls that I, that I made after the election five years ago was to Mr. McVickers to say, this is a priority of our board. We want restaurants here on the west side of town. We don't have any. And it wasn't the amazing conversation I thought it was going to be. He shared with me his concern over, at that point, a dozen years of working to get some sit-down restaurants there. And it's something that it's our focus and his focus and would be a top priority. But, and I say that also to say that we're not denying this because it'll be too much competition for, for a business in the area. I think, I can, I can't tell you these locations, but I can, I can point out a dozen locations where CVS is specifically looking to go across the street from Walgreens for that competition.
In South Elgin, that actually, when you said that, it made me start thinking. At the intersection of McLean and Spring, they are directly across the street from each other, Kitty Corner, at that intersection. There's a CVS and a Walgreens.
That's probably two different developers. Just like I mentioned, how all those auto parts stores on Douglas, I didn't think three of them could, could, you know, be there. And they, two of the three I know are doing real well, and the third one must be because he's been there the longest. But those are real close competition and they just came in because it was the right usage. And it must have been the right, they must have did studies that saying, we need that. Just like Christian Brothers did a study and says, we can make it next to.
And the difference in that situation is neither of the other two business owners came in and lobbied basically for their own behalf. I mean, Merlin's got a great deal that night. We voted down any competition for them in the area. I mean, that's not, to me, that's not good legal standing to be on. But those automotive uses have lasted and survived in this, in, in the same three blocks. And all of us looked at each other going, same thing with Mattress Firm. I don't know how they managed to make as many sales as they do. But the reality is, when you're looking at things from a zoning standpoint, we can't deny them because they're competing with a neighbor.
I have a comment and a question. We have a successful sit-down restaurant that's not only near a gas station, it's literally in a gas station, the Inferno Restaurant on Orchard Road. And by all accounts, they're doing quite well. So I just kind of wanted to make that comment. My question is, who owns the land that Merlin sits on?
It's a St. Charles Corporation that we sold the land to.
So you've sold the land. I think when the board begins to make analogies between one company that's leasing property and another company that's leasing property, they're missing the point. The issue is the land value affected, and that's one of our criteria.
It's also that, that, that criteria was also, there was no testimony at the prior board meeting.
We're begging you to provide some.
Well, I, 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 I'm not going to give you any testimony that says it's going to devalue.
He's on the other side of that argument. He's saying it's not diminishing the property.
Well, I'm not an advocate for either side, but I do represent the people of Montgomery. And I'm not hearing any new facts.
The people of Montgomery are about to get, you know, potentially $30,000 a year of additional money coming into their sales rolls, additional competition for them to go to more than one place to get their automobiles fixed, and another eight jobs and vacant land that's going to have a development, you know, lots of investment in it.
You're describing the nature of the business and our discussion is about the value of the land. Will it be adversely affected or not?
The value of my land is going to be, is going to be increased.
We're not talking about the value of your land.
And the value of the land that I sold, all of the value of the land that I sold is going to be increased. More development is going to increase the value of that property rather than decrease it.
It's entirely speculation.
And my guess is that the assessor is going to pick up on that and he'll, and he'll support me on that.
Yeah, well, the other, the comment that, the clarification I want to make is, he's saying that it will not diminish the value of the property next to it. There's been no testimony in that public hearing that would indicate that it would. Yet we voted it down because we think that it will diminish the value.
I think that we heard a good number of minutes of discussion from the current owner of that adjacent property.
He mentioned his, the impact on his business.
Yeah, impact on the business is different.
Okay, well, then I call for a vote here. Do we want to reopen the discussion or not? I'm not hearing any.
We would need a motion to reconsider.
Yeah, it would have to be listed on another agenda, but you could certainly see if there's some consensus to put that.
I'm not making that motion, but I'm proposing that we end the discussion if we don't have such a motion.
Steve, you want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to reconsider, but that does not mean that I'm, I may, I may change my vote, I may not. I will give you the opportunity to, to bring this to the board again. We can discuss this.
Correct.
So we would have to add a motion to reconsider on the agenda on the 26th?
Because it's not listed today.
And then we can have that on that agenda item?
No, that would just be to reconsider and then I think there would be a delay.
Why can't you just, why can't you vote on the reconsideration today and then put it on the agenda for a revote?
Because any vote that's taken by a public body has to be listed on the agenda. And since this was not listed on the agenda for action this evening, there can be no vote taken on it.
Fair enough. Do we have to have a new public hearing if it's the same position?
Because this was a zoning issue, there should be a new public hearing as well. You could have the motion to reconsider separately. So you could have the motion to reconsider vote and then at the following meeting have the public hearing.
I'm just going to throw this out because I don't, I don't know the answers. I'm not, you know, a zoning attorney, but I will tell you that frankly, time is of the essence here. You know, you're, Christian Brothers is already looking in, in, in Orland Park. And, you know, they've got a pretty.
Legally, we can put the motion to reconsider on the 26th. And I'm hearing some people say, we can go ahead and put that on. May not change where they land on the decision, but.
And at that time, nobody has to make the motion either. So it would just be on the agenda. So if somebody wanted to make the motion to reconsider, that vote could occur. But if somebody changed their mind and none of the parties that could make the motion decide that they want to, then they don't have to go forward with it. It would just have to be listed on the agenda in order to take a vote.
So the earliest we're going to see this item come back up before us for a vote would be the first meeting in April?
Correct, because I don't believe that there's enough time right now for the public hearing between this, to post for a public hearing between this meeting and next meeting.
Right, but we wouldn't post, well, we'll figure that out. Because we wouldn't post for a public hearing until we make, until we actually vote in the positive manner to reconsider.
Why can't you post it for a public hearing for the 26th in the event that you guys, you know, don't vote affirmatively for, to reconsider, then at least everybody's notified then.
We may already be past the timeframe.
I think we might, because there's a statutory timeframe to get it published.
We'll figure that out tomorrow, but it, it looks like there's an appetite to add that to, to an agenda. We'll try and make it as condensed as we can. But I do appreciate people being at least open to the conversation from a zoning standpoint.
I have a couple more comments.
Property owners are entitled to a written notice of the hearing as well.
It would be the same process as last time.
So we have all that to do.
When Christian Brothers came in here and they did their presentation, they said that they were distinctly different in their presentation. They said that they were distinctly different than Merlin and they didn't do some of this, some of the, a lot of the same things that Merlin. We had their pages, their webpages. I think seventy-five percent of the things were the same.
So it's, it's.
I'm not done. They discussed being family-friendly and local, but yet they don't have a franchisee for this location. And I'm assuming they probably don't have a franchisee for the Orland or Orland Park location. We have a, we had someone who came in here, the owner of Merlin's, a local, local homeowner, a local person who's invested in the community. a local person who's invested in the community. And I'm going to go back to the biggest thing that my wife and I argue about, or what are we going to have for dinner? And right now, over at Orchard and 30, and that whole area, where do we go? We have to go to Oswego, we have to go to Aurora, we have to go to Yorkville. I want to spend my tax dollars in Montgomery, but there's very little to spend my tax dollars on.
So I, first of all...
I just want to clarify, because I'm pretty sure that when they presented, they do have a local franchisee. They just can't name them.
They said they did not.
No, they, no, the second ten, they said no. I think I can address all your points fairly succinctly, and then I'll let, I'll sit down. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for considering reconsidering on the 26th. Trustee Youngerman, I see from your coat that you work for a particular business. I assume that's who you work for. I think it's fair to say that, you know, our country's made up of all kinds of different people and all kinds of different businesses, and most businesses like to try to differentiate themselves from the next guy. They're trying to sell their product. I don't speak for Christian Brothers, but I feel very comfortable in suggesting to them that they're going to tell you that they're different than the next guy, just as Merlin is going to tell you that they're different from the next guy. So I don't particularly have too much of a problem with that because I think people are allowed to try to sell themselves. Second of all, the franchisee issue, I know that when they came in to talk with you, they did not have a franchisee to step up and stand right next to the corporate person with them, and there's good reason for that, because had that person done that and stuck his neck out on the line and you guys turned him down, nor would not, he would not have a business here in Montgomery that he was looking to start, put a bunch of money into, and work hard with. He wouldn't have his old job in all likelihood. So it's a little bit of a catch-22 when you're a retailer coming into a town like this asking for approval. As far as the sit-down restaurants go, we could sit here and talk ad nauseam about the need for sit-down restaurants in Montgomery. I'm on the team. I've been on the team since 2005. I've been on the team, working really, really hard, not only with my time and my efforts, but with my family's dollars. And the fact is, is that over 13, you've seen what we've developed at this intersection. I think we've done a pretty good job. You know, we brought in the world's largest retailer. We brought in all kinds of national retailers. Go down, just go down the list. There aren't, there are not that many mom-and-pops in that development. You've got many more, you know, national retailers that generally, you know, do a really, really good job. Not that the mom-and-pops don't, they do. There's a, there's a place for them, too. My point is, is that the sit-down restaurants just aren't there. And if you, if you guys shut us down on the basis that you want a sit-down restaurant so that you can spend your money here, it's going to be a long time. It's not to say that on the remaining land that we own out there, we're not going to keep trying. I would love to have a sit-down restaurant, but it's not in the cards, especially for that lot that we're talking about between a gas station and an automotive use, so...
I don't mean that lot in particular, but I'm, in general.
I think, yeah, I'm with you.
We're on the team. We're on it. Have been.
All right.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We have the correct address now for Merlin's to notify them this time around?
Did we not before? Are we sending to the property owner?
Well, they weren't notified last time. I'm the one who went into the store and said, "Do you know this is happening?"
They were notified, their address had not been corrected with the county records in terms of their headquarters for the, for the business, so it was, they were notified.
Okay, it has been corrected, though, do we know, or?
It's not been corrected on the county records, but we know who the proper ownership address is now.
Do we send it to the business or the landowner?
The landowner.
Yeah. So Merlin's isn't going to get one. The owner of the LLC, whoever pays the taxes will get it.
Okay, that's why, okay.
Just for a point of clarification, the notice was sent to the landowner of record. The landowner happened to move their office within the same town, give or take, but the assessor had not updated that. So...
Thank you. All right, moving on, we have item E, which is a public hearing on the budget, so at that I'll open the public hearing and turn it over to Justin for some remarks.
For the public hearing on the budget, we will be discussing the budget specifically, the Water and Water Improvement Fund later in the agenda. So if there's any questions right now, I could answer those, but we'll discuss a little bit later, too.
Okay. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board on the budget, the public hearing for the budget? This is for the fiscal year that begins May 1?
Did you open it? Did you open it?
I did, yeah. All right. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, and then we'll move on for discussion.
That's the fastest item of the night. Wow.
All right, move on. The consent, I'll read the items, entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the village board meeting of February 26th, the building report for February of 2018, accounts receivable report for February of 2018, accounts payable through March 8th, and the cancellation of the March 20th committee of the hall, resolution 2018-006, adopting a purchasing policy, and resolution 2018-007, adopting a purchasing card policy. Is there a motion?
Approve.
Second. Coleril?
Trustee Spurling. Trustee Lee. Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
And Trustee Bond.
Yes.
That carries 5-0, thank you. Items for separate action. Item A, we have recommendation by the plant commission of the zoning map update. That I'll turn it over to Director Young.
Mr. President, tonight you have before you the annual update of the zoning ordinance. The plant commission made a recommendation at their last meeting to approve the 2018 zoning ordinance. A couple of things that have changed in the year since this was approved were the special use for outside storage for ATMI on Lake Street, Fox Valley Park District annexed some property, and it was zoned at the Jericho Park area. Earthmovers Credit Union had a special use for a new drive-through and a new facility on Baseline Road, and the Archery Place LLC was a special use that was added within the industrial park. Those are just a couple of examples of the changes that have been made on the zoning map, and staff would recommend approval.
Awesome. Any comments from the board?
Motion to accept recommendation of planning commission?
Second.
Coleril?
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Awesome. And then item B is the ordinance, 1805, approving the 2018 official zoning map. This is waiver of first, passage on the second. There's no discussion, entertain a motion?
Motion to approve? Second.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
All right, that carries 5-0, thank you.
Just a second. Whoever's controlling the microphone volume, could we get some more up at the dais, please? My hearing's starting to go anyway, so I just thought we needed to bump this up a little bit. Okay. You guys agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item C, we have a recommendation of the plant commission of PC 2018-003, special use request for a motor vehicle service use is located at 1460, 1470, and 1480 Douglas Road. This is Velazquez Mufflers and Brakes and Supreme Motors, Inc. And then there's two ordinances after this, so we'll kind of discuss all at the same time, which is, which are both first readings. We won't be voting on those tonight, but that would be granting two specific special uses. I don't know if you're going to get into that, but if you want to take it away.
Okay, thank you. This is two different special uses for the same building. This is a four-unit building, two units of which would be the Supreme Auto Motors, Inc., used car sales. These are the two center units within this building that run from 1460 to 1500 Douglas Road. The Supreme Motors would be in the two middle units that used to be occupied by Sound Decisions. That's been out of the location for quite a number of months. The second would be Velazquez Muffler and Brakes, which is a muffler and brake shop that would take over the former location of Merlin's 2,000 Mile Shop that was on Douglas Road and has also been out of that unit for a number of months. Both of these properties are Zoned B2. The plant commission recommended approval of the two uses with the conditions of a limited area for used cars in the parking lot in front of the facility, additional landscaping, and no additional outside storage surrounding the uses. That was the plant commission's recommendation at their last meeting to approve both special uses, and we'd ask that you bring this back in two weeks.
That would fill three of the four units. The fourth unit's currently filled, correct?
The fourth unit, the southernmost unit, is a body shop and auto repair facility at the south end of the building that is operated by the building owner himself.
And so the building owner is obviously, must be okay with this use, if he's leasing this out?
Yes, the building owner spoke at the public hearing, and he was obviously supportive of the two leases for these additional two uses in the vacant units of the building.
Okay. Motion to accept the recommendation of planning commission?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to make a comment based on our conversation when Mr. McVickers was up here, and because we have such a large audience tonight, these are, to me, these are complimentary uses, so it's not, it's not, it makes more sense to me than what we've been discussing, so that's why I'm having no issue with this. I just wanted to clarify that.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
That carries 5-0, thank you. And then D and E, we're not voting on tonight, which is the approve, approval of the actual ordinances. Is there any objection to putting those on consent at a future meeting?
No.
Hearing none, those will go on consent at the next available meeting. Move on to item F, we have recommendation of the plant commission of PC 2018-002, which is a special use request for a motor vehicle service use and a drive-through located at the southeast corner of Route 30 and Gordon Road. This is Gas and Wash, GLR Ventures, and this is just this only item. Okay, go ahead, Director Young.
Gas and Wash is requesting a special use approval for a motor service use, gas station and car wash, with a drive-through for Dunkin' Donuts, that would, all of which would require a special use under the B2 zoning ordinance. As identified, this is at the southeast corner of US Highway 30 and Gordon Road. The motion from the plant commission at their last meeting to approve the use was denied, failed by a vote of zero to five. The plant commission at their meeting had a number of questions regarding traffic on US Route 30 and the number of accidents that had taken place in the recent months along Route 30 at the intersection of Gordon. Since January, and checking the records with the police department, since January of last year, 2017, there have been six accidents on Route 30, and there was one on Gordon Road itself at the intersection. We checked the iDOT records regarding daily traffic trips. On Route 30 itself, there are 9,050 average traffic trips per day. On Gordon, northbound, there are 6,000 trips per day, and indicated, the records indicated that southbound on Gordon are 450 trips per day. At the plant commission meeting, the applicant indicated that there would be some adjustments made to the site plan. The Gas and Wash folks have included within your packet tonight a revised site plan that includes an eight-foot wall that would be along the southern property line, directly abutting Adam Drive, and a, some additional landscaping. It has limited access now, or no access for trucks to the north-south drive that was indicated on the site plan, so that has been cut off in terms of truck access to the north-south drive that would go down to Adam Drive. As I indicated, the plant commission's recommendation was to not approve the special use. I know that there are a number of residents and attendants tonight that I believe would like to speak, as well as the Gas and Wash representatives are here as well.
Yeah, so if it makes sense, maybe the Gas and Wash representatives, if they wanted to address the board first, if they're here? Yeah. I'm trying to find this updated.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to get up and speak on behalf of Gas and Wash this evening. My name is Lyman Teeman, I'm the attorney for Lynn McHenry, who is the owner of the Gas and Wash Montgomery LLC, which is the proposed user for this four-acre parcel of property at the southeast corner of Route 30 and Gordon. We did appear at the planning commission on March 1st. We made a presentation, staff also made a presentation of our request, and there were a number of neighbors that appeared from properties both on the north side of Route 30 and then south of us, on the south side of Adam Avenue. We, we heard, we heard the expressions of interest by the neighbors. They have had some valid concerns, we believe, concerning lighting and traffic and potential noise from the development of the property. With that, we have taken it upon ourselves to go back to the drawing board and look to see if there is anything that we could do to the site that would make it much more compatible, and we have come up with a number of suggestions. I do want to point out that the staff report for this project identifies the property as a B2 zoning classification, which has been that way for a number of years, and for the automotive use, for the gas station, and for the drive-up food service window, we require a special use permit for those uses. As part of the staff report, they go through the criteria that you discussed with the other gentleman before, and it lists out the six criteria that are necessary to be in compliance with to get the approval of the special use permits. According to your staff and according to our experts, we have met all of those criteria. We understand that neighbors sometimes become more emotional and don't necessarily look at the particular classifications and the, and the legal arguments that are concerned with those classifications. And they did, they did make a presentation to the planning commission, and the planning commission did not, as a result of that, offer an expression of whether or not the planning commission determined we had met or not met those criteria. There was a motion to recommend by the planning commission, the vote was unanimously against recommendation. With that, after leaving that meeting, our engineering staff and planning staff sat down, put together a revised site plan that we believe addresses all of the concerns of the neighbors. I have with me this evening Scott Pritchett and Brian Hertz. Scott is our land planner. He's the one that will be making a presentation concerning our revised plan. Brian Hertz is our civil engineer on the project, and if you have any engineering issues, Brian would be more than happy to address those issues as we get into discussion. But with that, I would like to turn this over to Scott Pritchett.
Good evening, my name is Scott. I'm with Aris Architects. Thank you for the opportunity and listening to our presentation this evening. Is it possible we get the revised site plan on the screen? Is that possible?
You would think. We should be able to do that.
Okay. When we, when we first came to this site and talked to the village... Okay. When we, when we first came to this site and talked to the village about our proposed development, on a state highway, we wanted to put a gas station with a retail store, typical convenience store. We had Dunkin' Donuts was interested, as we'd heard in the earlier meeting, that Dunkin' Donuts has been looking at this area. They're quite interested in having it, but they do require a drive-through. Along with the gas station, convenience store, and the Dunkin', we have a, a car wash. And we also have a separated diesel fueling area. I know that likes to get discussed a lot about being a truck fueling area, which trucks can fuel there, of course. But we're not a truck stop. We don't have, we don't anticipate a lot of truck traffic. But it does get our diesel fueling away from our gas fueling. Those two do not mix well together. So when you put diesel out on the islands where the gas is, cars and trucks don't mix well. So if we can separate those trucks, which could be dump trucks, landscape trucks, delivery trucks, during the last meeting, there was a lot of concern about the truck traffic and the fact that they could exit out and go on to Adams. Our revised site plan show, will show that we revise our site plan so that trucks can no longer access, they can only come off of Gordon and then do a U configuration on our property. Getting closer. I think that may be it, if we go up just a little bit more.
What's that?
Yeah.
I think so.
And that is the old, that is the old site plan where the trucks were allowed to pass through. And then the new revised site plan should be attached somewhere at the end. And that would show how we've limited, or eliminated, the possibility of trucks being able to go onto the, onto Adams behind us. Still, that's the old site plan. And in addition to that, the previous, original screen we had up there, where it was the fence with landscaping, we'll put a mound along the back. The intent is to, to buffer the people along south of our property, on the other side of Adams, as much as possible. During our presentation to the Plan Commission, we had stressed the fact that we have multiple locations. One closest to this is in Plainfield, to give you an example of how our, our business operates. We do a quality operation with the buildings, all of quality materials, masonry, that matches our enclosures, refus, it matches the building signs, so forth. The intent is that we wanna be a, a quality business in the neighborhood. And I don't know if we're gonna get that site plan up there. It should be up there somewhere. Is it?
We've got the one on the board.
Okay, we do have one on the board that we can show you, can walk around, and the residents can also see that. So we do want them to see that.
Well, I wanna make sure I'm looking at the right page. So someone show me where it is.
You wanna just walk that up there, Brian? Walk around, show each one of the board members?